Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Brookfield Selectment Meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2017. I'd like to raise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to acknowledge the monthly reports and minutes of the Personnel Board and also the Capital Reporting Committee, that's also in here also. So, both meetings from the 24th and June 6th of the Personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we have announcements. We have the Brookfield Concerts on the Common Friday, July 7. And it will be at 4:00. We will have the Harrington Hospital Health Club. 5:00 a.m. will be the B.E.S. Jazz Band. 5:30 p.m. Henry the Juggler. 6:30 the Blues Brothers Briefcase. And there will be a baking contest for cookies of all kinds. Judges are needed for baking contests. In the event of rain, the concert will be canceled. And we have public access. If anybody has anything for public access. Name, if you don't do, we'll just begin right off. Okay. This morning, we're going to have a Treasurer's Discussion because we had a woman that had accepted the job and then she declined it. And so this morning, we have with us Mr. Keith Arsenault from West Brookfield. Would you like to come up here and have a seat? Mr. Arsenault is retired from the town of Charleston. And at one time, I know he was in West Brookfield a while, because I talked to Jack Tivoli about this. And he is willing to come on, well, as he doesn't want a permanent appointment, but he is willing to come on and help us out as the interim. And so we've talked with some of the different employees. I don't know if you have any of that. And I know that...
I have spoke at least with the tax collector.
Yeah. And I know that Karen told me that, I guess she has spoken to Mr. Snyder. And Mr. Snyder has also talked to Holly. Did he talk to you, Brenda?
Not recently.
Yeah, he, yeah. What he discussed was about, and then Karen had also spoke to Mr. Arsenault yesterday. And he said that he would be willing to come on as like the interim and as we could figure like a Treasurer Consultant. And if we hired somebody as Treasurer, he would be willing to train that person.
Okay. And I had actually expressed an interest when your resume first came for Mr. Arsenault just because of the fact that I don't like rushing permanent hiring decisions. I'm a big fan of being very considered in how you kind of staff your organization, especially where Brookfield's not a big town. You know, it's nice to have a little bit of running room to make any type of permanent commitment. And it does seem to be, in essence, a good fit. Can you talk to me a little bit about, it looks like you were, you ended your career in Charlton. And, which appears to be a, you know, I know they're a fairly larger town than we are.
Yes.
So what's the size of the budget for Charlton?
About 27.
We're about seven, probably over seven here.
And then, and then West Brookfield, you were there for the longest period of time. And do both of those towns use VEDAR?
Yes.
So you are familiar with VEDAR?
Yes, I am.
And from a, what are some of the, kind of the key strengths that you think you can provide on a, on an interim basis to help us? I know you're, you're probably aware, we're a little bit behind because of the staffing, you know, issues that we have. We've had unfortunate, you know, really unfortunate events related to that.
We hired our longtime Treasurer had left, I mean, Town Accountant had left, and we hired a new one last year. She's here. This is Carrie, Carrie Polacowski, this is Mr. Arsenault. And, you know, we've hired Carrie, and there's been, you know, a lot of cleanup that has to be done. And it hasn't really been done a lot on the VEDAR end over in the accounting side.
So, we're in the midst of a full account restructuring, as well as kind of a reconciliation of a lot of our longstanding accounts.
All of them.
All of our longstanding accounts.
I know we want to let Carrie explain what she has done.
Sure. I think that would be...
Yeah, I think she should explain.
Kind of like what the process is that we have set up to achieve that reconciliation on a high level.
Because we have had the Department of Revenue that was down, and we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. And so Carrie can probably tell you the plan that we have put in place, and they are in complete approval of it.
So, what's happening currently is there was a lot of discrimination in accounts. There's little balances here and there that haven't been figured out through the years and things like that. So, we have contracted based state municipal accounting through VEDAR. And they are completely cleaning up any loose ends or any outstanding years. They're going to make adjusting entries to make the money match where it should. And then they're also restructuring our accounting system because it's currently kind of half HUMIS, half...
Statutory.
Statutory, yes. So, and the statutory is really kind of na, nonexistent anymore. So, we are setting up to HUMIS standards so that whoever comes into the position will be on strength in this accounting. And then what will happen after that is we have VEDAR coming in with base state municipal accounting to offer training to all three departments. We have allotted 25 hours per department to help each department learn to make VEDAR speak better to each other, because that's a big difficulty here. Everyone is kind of given their own little module, but nobody was told how to make it talk to each other. So, we're going to have some training on that. And they're going to monitor and get us through to December. And at that time, what they're going to do is close fiscal '16 with a clean set of books. They are also going to close and produce all the documents for fiscal '17. And that should all be done in late September, mid-October. We do not have free cash certified at this point because of the discrepancies in '16. So, as soon as the auditing happens, they will include our '16 money in with the '17 approval. So, it's not that we're losing yet. We do, we are on an extension, so we're not losing any funds.
Probably the other piece of it that's important for Mr. Arsenault to understand is, I know you've been working diligently in the Treasurer's Office, but what are the fundamental functions that you feel comfortably that we're still maintaining? And what are some of the areas that you think are going to need the most help, given the fact that we've been so short-staffed?
If I could interrupt for one minute, Mr. Arsenault, Holly is our Assistant Treasurer. She filled in right off after Sandy went through. So Holly's got some, she's got a lot of knowledge because she trained under Sandy for four years.
I've pretty much keeping up with the health benefits, all the benefits, the payroll, a little warranty that are being pushed through.
I'm currently entering all of the cash receipts to get those all cut up.
Okay, yeah. Quick question. When was cash last reconciled?
All the way until July of '16, I mean, '17. July '17, we balanced. And then by the time we got to balancing, the rest of it is when Sandy fell ill, so...
You mean '16?
'16. It's for '16.
So you have nine to 10 months?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But that is being handled by the, by VEDAR. They're going to handle everything and all of the adjustments. Just under time constraint, I'm sorry.
Has the lack of free cash certification affected your budgetary process or your town?
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a... Well, go ahead.
No, what happened with town meeting, what happened, we met with the Department of Revenue.
Yes.
And they had recommended that we don't really do any big spending at it. I mean, they said just those things that were important. They said they did not really recommend any raising appropriate, just do that, you know, for the budget. And the rest of it was different items that we really needed. They said to take it out of stabilization. And the Selectmen voted we would take out that out of stabilization. And then we put it in our article, and we wanted to go back into the stabilization and call town meeting. And at the end here, where is it? It's not a town report.
And that didn't take our stabilization under, like, the recommended minimums? Didn't even come close?
Yeah.
From standard to overall fiscal health? Overall fiscal health?
We're not bad.
We're not?
No, we're not bad.
There's a lot of towns in worse shape than us that haven't had some of the challenges that we've had, quite frankly.
All that we took out of stabilization was, I have it right here, it was $136,106. And we're still well above the 5% recommended in stabilization balance.
Yeah, so, big picture, healthy. Smaller picture, awful lot of work to do right now. But we are bringing in a third party to do the heavy lifting because it just wasn't reasonable with the number of staff and hours to get there.
So I think we have a good plan, please.
All right. Keeping up with employee benefits.
And then...
Of course, you have the elementary school that...
And this is Brendan Nagel, Brendan, I'm sorry, Brendan Parrish, she's a tax collector.
And we've ruled everything over to, right up until June 1st, from the Treasurer's Office to the Accountant. It was just kind of sitting there on cue or something.
Great. Well, the fortunate thing is, I do have quite a few years of experience with VEDAR. Started off with VEDAR perhaps 15 or so years ago to using the tax title.
Yeah.
And then eventually, we talked the West Brookfield Selectmen into integrating VEDAR across the board. So, tax collectors like love point for some reason, but I think VEDAR is a...
I love VEDAR.
Better system. And you can move the vouchers from one department to the next, so I think it's helpful.
That's our goal here.
Tax title definitely needs to be addressed and tweaked, because there's something with the actual map and what that needs to be changed. It literally couldn't fit inside the box, so we had to shorten them, so, but that's so our tax title is kind of hung up right now.
On another note, tax title is nowhere near a lot of the towns in our area. We're only about 216, I think. So, it's minor there to a lot of the municipalities around.
What type of funds do you appropriate each year for tax title?
I think we had, what, 30? Was it 15 or 30 this year that we appropriated?
15.
15, knocked it down for some reason. They knocked it down, I thought it was, they knocked it down to five.
No, they wanted it knocked down to five.
Was it eight, $8,000? No?
You want to say 10.
10. You think we left it, oh, we did leave it at 10.
But if there's a, if there's a need, like if, so, there were a number of places where, quite frankly, we were conservative in the budgeting for first quarter. And the intent was, once we get our books reconciled and we have a better grasp on the tactical level of our financial health, so if you were to take an aggressive stance towards the existing tax title, and we wound up in a position where it was advisable at the special town meeting in the fall to direct some more funds there, you're not going to get a lot of pushback from the Selectmen about doing that.
We do have another, like, $8,600 to encumber.
Right.
So, total balance, that should be sufficient.
And that's always fairly, anything else that, you know, we feel with the fall meeting coming on, anything that we have, you know, put some more money into it a little at that time.
Actually, because it's so expensive to foreclose on properties, you need to come up with a plan that makes sense. And you don't want to spend $2,000 to collect $500.
True, although sometimes it's worth it just to get it back on the rolls and potentially get it back into the system as a...
Cool Woman Page is still actively working on what they have already, so...
And then another thing that Sandy had tried, she went out, because I think she did it in East Brookfield, when she was tax collector down there, she went up to some company, it was almost like a real estate company, and they would buy up, buying up.
Buy the lanes.
But the thing was, I guess, we really didn't think that that was all feasible to do that.
Yeah, I've shied away from it. Problem is, you've become a collector for them.
Right.
So, we didn't, we didn't think it would be a good...
And he looked at him and he took one, so I think that has to show how much...
So that was about, we did probably agree with that.
Of course, they're going to want the best, that they're going to make the money.
So, do you have any more questions on that?
Well, I do. Just to pick one, in my career, I've had two tax title situations where I actually foreclosed on a lot of occupied homes. And I worked with Board of Selectmen to have the parallel operation of the homeowner obtaining a reverse mortgage. And so the Board of Selectmen was able to rescind the foreclosure decree. And that particular entrepreneur was able to, was able to retain the property. So, I, you know, from my perspective, I don't think we should be in the business of taking things away only when, as a last piece of...
Oh, I agree with you.
Surely need to...
Oh, yeah.
...pay them and pay their fair share.
Set up a payment program for the collective.
Yeah, and we, yeah, the collectors have been pretty proactive in those terms, a lot of people who are on...
As long as they're in contact with me.
Yeah, that's important.
Where, you know, I'm not about kicking people out of their home.
We don't want that to happen.
So, I have foreclosed on a lot of properties, particularly in West Brookfield. I don't know if you've heard of it.
Yep.
There's an error with all the little lots, and people decide they can't do anything, but so they stop paying.
We had the same situation here down at our Lakeside Family Camping, was the same thing.
I read about it.
Yeah, it was the same situation we had, and he wouldn't pay the taxes either down there. Went to foreclosure, and then the town has kept it.
Mostly it's a lot of just either people passed away or families that, there's so many heirs, it's complicated, those seem to be common.
That's what a lot of it is.
Those are the ones that drag down the figures.
Exactly. And that's basically what's there.
So, I didn't mean to get locked down on the tax title. So, what is your, your goal is to try to get everything up to snuff and up to speed? And so that's your...
Yeah, our primary focus is to support, so Holly's been doing a great job with the tactical, with the pay, with the benefits, with the personnel type stuff, but she's only one person. And some of the, there's not a lot of bandwidth there for things like starting to move the tax title bits that are already in process. There's probably some properties that are getting close that do need to transition from the collector's office to the treasurer's office. We do need to really, we haven't taken a comprehensive look at some of our policies and some of like our investment policies and establishing perhaps what our standards and good practices ought to be. And I think part of that's incumbent on the Selectmen, but we certainly need some advice in that role, because I know a lot about finance, but I know a lot about operational finance for private companies, you know, from a standpoint of best practices in a municipality. I only know what, you know, mass municipal puts up on their website, okay, versus doing it for 25 years. So I think we would be open to, you know, both the helping with the tactical piece of let's get the accounts recovered, let's set up some good standard operating procedures between the departments. For reconciliation would probably be the next piece of it that we really need help with. And then the piece after that is kind of the more like long-term investing, financial policies type stuff that might be you, might be the next person, depending on what the timeline winds up being. And then, you know, potentially their skill level, because it may be that we have somebody that still requires training, and if you're willing to, and interested in staying on somewhat consultant type role. We have to see how it works out. It might be that, you know, it works out well between the town of Brookfield and yourself and the financial team here, or, you know, we may get to three months from now and we're all like, she thanks for the help, but...
No, we are, we are in the process of rewriting a policies and procedure book. And then also, where finances and things, we deal with the volunteer, and they do come in, Holly, they have been in, so, you know, they're there for us.
I was going to ask who handles the trust fund.
Yeah, that's who handles on the trust fund.
I've used them in a few cases.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, they are very good. They've run around a long time too.
And we use UniBank.
How about open deposit tables?
And then also, we deal with the hometown, actual hometown. They're the server.
Everything I collect goes into hometown.
It does. Do you use lockbox too? Online payments?
Yep. We do. UniBank online, which is working out really good.
The more of these services you offer though, the more challenging the reconciliation could be, and the more your funds are spread out.
The more challenging.
Bankers love to have the open new accounts.
I know. But it's almost a natural device now with everything online. Everything we do online creates a new account, so it's...
Right. So, those are some of the areas where I'm sure your experience could really help us out in trying to navigate.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have, I know Mr. Snyder has discussed with Karen.
Discussed with me, and he also discussed with Holly.
And Holly asked, because a plan that might work, we would like to hire the other candidate. Lonnie, how do you call Lonnie?
Croatia.
Croatia. She has been involved with all kinds of this. She worked in Charlton for a while, you might know her.
Yeah, I know her.
You know Lonnie? And then she's worked for the town of Mockbridge.
Framingham.
Framingham. And she's been involved with a lot of municipal over the years, and that's really kind of what we would like, municipal.
Which position?
For the Treasurer's position, you could, and we want to send her to school this year. And we wanted you probably to train her for the position.
Does she have financial expertise?
She has financial experience from...
Framingham and Holly.
Let's see, she had been helping Holly up with the financial clerk. And then when she was with, what was it? The town of Framingham. She worked for them, and she was responsible here for everything, basically down there, the spreadsheets for various, you know, projects. And she also took care of 40 to 50 employees' personnel records, and she did the, she did all the pay and the payrolls and everything down there. So she is familiar, you know, with some financial.
She's a very smart person as well. She picks up things very quickly.
Is she currently employed by the county?
Yes, she, yes, she works for...
I saw her name on the website, that's why.
She, she's Assistant Town Clerk.
Okay.
And, but that's not, I mean, it's a few hours a week. And then she's the Public Records Officer, and she's Secretary of the Board of Health. That's just a few hours. And then she's been helping us out here in the office with municipal, as a municipal clerk also. So, I mean, she does have the training for the municipality, and we think that she would do a good job. I personally, I do, I don't know how that feels, but Mr. Snyder had expressed, the last time, I know he had talked to Holly and he had talked to Karen, that he expressed those, the same thing I had. Now, Holly, do you want to add into this a little?
Well, we just, he came in Friday, and we did discuss hiring Lonnie, and we both just came to the conclusion that it was probably the best idea with a consultant. I said to Lonnie, I think she's a very valuable employee and under your, you've got so much knowledge that I think you could train.
You could train her.
She's excited with the VEDAR and that training.
Yeah. And the, kind of the primary goal, as I would see this model, though it's kind of getting, getting sprung on me in real time, would be, would be kind of a long-term mentorship standing with somebody like yourself would be very advantageous, because she has the background with navigating municipals, she has the relationship with the financial team and having supported them in a more administrative role. But, you know, is very green from the perspective of some of the very solid questions that you're asking, understanding what those processes need to look like, understanding what a good reconciliation looks like between Treasurer and Accountant.
I know she will, her first week, she is going to Treasurer's School.
Right.
And she's willing to learn, and a lot of times, different communities have had people that come in, are a little green, and they pick it up.
Well, and, right, and I'm not disrespecting her in saying that, but what I, what I would like Mr. Arsenault to understand is that, that just because there's a lot of advocacy for her filling the role long-term, it doesn't mean that we don't need you and your skill set.
Oh, wait. I'm like, I'm like, we didn't say that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure we put that through.
Karen, Karen had talked to Mr. Arsenault yesterday and about this.
Okay.
Oh, no, he knows he would be in here like it's the interim, and he would be a consultant, and he was willing to...
Could I make a request? Should we drop to Mr. Arsenault and just say...
Okay, certainly. I'm sorry.
We've been here for a few minutes.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm trying to be respectful, because sometimes it can be too casual, so...
Good. All right. What else?
So, I guess, in that, in that framework, what would you see as being inappropriate, say, scheduled for yourself? What do you think, given kind of the state of where we are, what would your recommendation be? Would you want to come in, you know, two days a week for a certain number of hours? Would you want to come in three days a week for a certain number of hours? Would it be four days a week for a certain number of hours to start the process of getting a feel for where the town is at? You know, that sort of thing.
My, well, I definitely need to see where the town is at this point in time. So, I want to see all the bank statements, we'll only see the last cash reconciliation. We're going to want to see what needs to be done, what turnover, not so much the turnovers of sales, but have the cash reports.
That's what I'm working on now. That'll be current by the end of the week. I'm already up to March, so...
All right, good. All right, the deposits being done?
Oh, the deposits are being done, yep. It's just the entry, the data entry that's, that's behind.
Because Holly had like the signing power, she would, you know, just sign checks, and she, her name's on all the bank statements and on everything, so she has all of that power to do that.
Good.
So, you have a day, well, first of all, do we want to make, entertain a motion?
Well, we haven't, we haven't discussed enumeration.
Oh, okay, all right.
Right, then we haven't talked about the hard stuff yet.
No.
So, and what that framework would be. I was, I was, I was dancing around it with schedule, so...
So, what is your thought?
How many hours a week?
All right, well, no, what he's looking at is probably trying to figure out, are we, are we talking about some sort of like, you know, whether it's in terms of hourly rate or in salary?
Hourly rate, well, that's something, you know, that we would probably, you know, have to discuss and ask you what you would want for an hourly rate.
All right. I'm, I'm going to take a guess and say probably about 12 hours a week.
Okay, 12 hours a week. And what would you ask for a salary?
My hourly rate in Charlton, when I left, was 43.57.
Okay. Okay. So that is what you would, you would want, 43.57? You wouldn't negotiate?
I understand they're Charlton, and this is Brookfield.
Well, I was going to say, the challenge is that they have, they have a $27 million budget, we have a $7 million budget, so...
So, is there any room for negotiation in this?
Well, let me ask you this. What do you pay the public safety officers who perform police details?
Currently, it's $44 an hour.
Yes, $44. Is it $44?
It is.
Holly would know that, because she were...
I'm negotiating right now.
Oh, you are? It's $44.
So, how do you compare one with the other?
It's based off of largely, so, and that's a really good question, frankly. And it's money safety versus physical safety, in essence.
It's money.
Flip side of that is generally those details are, in essence, overtime, so it's really kind of the equivalent of time they have.
Except for the guys who already worked a full...
Yeah, they've already worked it.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that most of the details are generally, in essence, overtime for those guys, because they... because they've got, they've gotten their full weekend before they ever get into detail. So really, it's closer to a $30 an hour pay rate at time and a half when you look at $44 an hour.
What is their hourly rate?
Yeah, what's the hot?
Their hourly rate?
For the full timer?
Full timers is about, it's between 25 and 30, basically.
No.
Or between 22 and, between 22 and like 28 is a full timer.
Yeah, right, right.
So.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's over 30.
No.
So, is that, that's what it would be?
Well, what I'm figuring out, and I'm using a couple of industry standard type of math calculations that probably have no bearing on reality, but I'll at least explain to you my logic, okay? Is that... If you, if you accept the premise that, let's see here, I'm coming out with a number that would be closer considering that it's a consultancy level. And one of the, one of the challenges is, is that when you pay an employee, you basically pay, you have, in essence, a carrying cost for that employee of about 25%.
Or higher.
Or higher.
Or high.
With the town, it's probably a little bit higher. Okay. And I used a starting point of, just, just for the sake of argument, or not argument, but discussion, of, of three quarters of what your initial offer was for a starting point for the town. And then adding kind of the 15% premium that you normally consider is the minimum for a consultant versus, versus an employee rate because you don't have that burden of, of the other benefits with a seasonal worker. And I'm coming out with about $37.50 an hour.
Typically, when I calculate the employee benefits, I'm coming up with close to 14% just for the retirement.
Right.
And the town provides a more individual retirement system with annual payment.
Okay.
And based on prior calculations, it's in that range of 14%. And then Medicare is still going to be there, health insurance, all of those types of benefits. And then when you factor in vacation and holiday pay, it does get up closer to 40%.
It does get up closer to 40%.
So, you know, we can, we can cut the hours a little. One of the things is, I'm not here to chit chat, but...
Oh, no, I understand that.
I'm coming to see what you need, identify, and then map out a plan to get it done. The other advantage with someone herself is, with the town of West Brookfield, I made a lot of money over the years, particularly back in the 90s. With the town of Charlton, we were in a health, health insurance consortium with Bay Path Vocational School and the town of Dudley. I worked out entry into the Hampshire Council of Governments Health Insurance Trust. And the towns, just the town of Charlton saving over $175,000 a year. Bay Path saving over $300,000 a year. And that's not just one year, that's going forward. The, the point of the example is that I keep my eyes open for opportunities. And then you bring it to the board and select them. So, I can't make promises, but that's one of the additional advantages.
So, right now, we're, for, I know, that's when you, right now, we're with mine, you know, with everybody across. And they, right now, are the most reasonable one. And we have tried in the past, because I was on the insurance committee.
Yes.
And we have tried with other ones and, you know, nobody has really wanted to get involved because, you know, we're...
We're small.
But we're still a small community. And we did, I think, go, how long did you work in the town?
Right.
I did think, we did try to get involved in the one I was just talking about.
So, and, and it may be that there were some, there may be some places where this, where Keith's contacts might be useful. And I think one of the things that perhaps we need to, to consider would be setting some value to if you found something like that. So in a consultancy role, not everything is an hourly rate, not everything is in salary because I've done that type of work in the past. So, and I, and I don't know how you feel about the number I came up with, Leonard, $37.50.
Well, this is something I think we will also have to discuss, you know, with Mr. Snyder and see how he feels about that, you know, his ideas.
Right, but at, and what did they budget? And I, I'm, I'm looking at also from the larger, from the larger structure, what do we budget for your, for your quarter?
36 something.
Yeah, total.
Uh, 6,500.
Okay, treasurer, that's fine, right here. Okay, treasurer's salary was $33,141 and it's at 84 cents.
I'm sorry, how much was it?
It was $33,141 and 84 cents.
Just 2%.
Yeah, that's the 2%.
No, plus 2%, oh, that you gave the 2%.
That is the 2% now, and then the 2% column.
And that was based on what, 24 hours a week?
That was based on 24 hours, but Sandy spent a lot more time than 24 hours in here. So what are you coming up with that?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to take a look at, at first of all, what's...
How many parcels do you have? How many parcels?
Uh, about $5,000. I don't know, since it's personal property.
You know, and, and honestly, our, if, if we were to pay you, in essence, time and a half at the rate that we, we have budgeted for our treasurer with the presumption that you'd be half again as effective based on your experience, it still comes out to that $40 an hour.
Well, I'm over here, I was thinking 42. And of course, this is a public meeting, so.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, unfortunately, yeah, everything has to be a public meeting, so.
So you discussed a timeframe, I'm just curious as to what...
Well, so, so here's, here's my thought on it, is to take a look at, um... And, and we probably have to do some fuzzy math, and we might have to do some fuzzy math, including with regards to, to our, our primary hire from a standpoint of knowing that, that Lonnie would not be necessarily capable of doing the full job from the get-go, right?
Yes, I understand.
Is that during, during the, during the training period or interim training period, the hourly rate might be something less than what we budgeted against, quite frankly?
Yes, I understand that fully, and I've talked to her and she understands that also.
Okay, that's great. And, and just trying to figure, figure it out, I mean, at, at 40 an hour, if we took... Let's see here.
What'd you say about, how many hours a week did you maybe?
He was thinking about 12.
12?
But, but what I, what I was looking at was, was 960.
Yeah, because you can work 960 hours.
Yes.
Yeah, so at, at 12 hours, it's, it's more than a year's worth of work than you could technically work.
But what would that leave like if you figure to pay, to pay another person also?
Well, well, and that's one of the reasons why I was asking the question about how much we had with the accountant clerk because those funds, as far as I'm concerned, we can figure out a way to, to use that for one or the other person's pay initially during that period of time. Because it is a wages account, and they're doing financial activities. And I think it's in keeping with, with kind of what our original plan was, particularly during the training period.
Yeah, poor training period, yeah.
It, it would be a, it would be inappropriate.
And here's the problem.
Right.
You can't have her be the treasurer and work for me.
Well, I understand that.
You can't do the two things.
Right. No, I understand that. So, and you still need the help.
And she would...
But we could potentially pay Ms. Keith here out of the consultant fees because, in essence, that's what he would be acting as. If she was designated in paper as the treasurer, then he would be brought on board specifically as a, as a treasurer consultant.
Treasurer consultant, interim, yeah, like interim treasurer consultant.
I think we put some money in for a consultant also, didn't we?
A consultant?
Yes, usually we fund $20,000 annually for a consultant. But that's generally related to bringing in money.
I look under the treasurers.
Oh, okay.
Because I think we put in for some consulting services. That's the other thing, could we encumber the balance of the, or...
You have to check with DIL.
No, we don't have anything in there.
What's that?
There's nothing?
No, it's, it's the treasurer's salary. And then it says the...
And to catch up, so actually.
Some of it, assistant expenses, certification, software. Yeah, there's nothing for consulting in there.
How about the selectmen consultant?
Yeah, that's where I was going with selectmen consultant.
Selectmen consultant.
I want to say it was only 2,500 for some reason.
No, that's confused. It was 10, I think 10,000 for the consultant.
Okay, selectmen consult, it is 10,000. We could probably use...
A portion of that.
Use a portion of that also.
Probably get us through July by encompassing some of the...
Yeah, that's true, actually, you could uncover some, but it would have to be what we think we're, we're gonna spend.
And we also use this, also some of this for grant writing, it's 10,000.
Well, I know we use it for grant writing.
The grant writing also.
Okay.
So Holly, um...
So right now, where, where, where are we? So you started at 43, we started at, I don't know where we started. I think we started, we were thinking we were starting at 25, but in reality, we're probably starting at 37.
Yeah, then we went to 37.50.
So.
Well, I think we can agree on 40.
Can you agree on 40?
I think we can agree.
I think we can agree on 40.
Yeah, we'll agree on 40, I'll make a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion at 40.
At 40, uh, on favor. Any discussion now for you, you would be satisfied with 40 hours?
Yes.
I mean, $40, okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And you think probably you'd be in here like, I think about 12 hours a week?
Well, in training, yes.
I, I think what we would want, or, or my perception of what you said that would seem to make sense to me would be probably there's some upfront loading. So it may be that you need to come in 25 or 30 hours the first week to figure out where we are. Okay? And then from that, if you would present a plan to us about what you think your schedule ought to be, that would be great.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
You have to make the motion to hire him.
Okay, and then we have to also...
This is a paper.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion if you, if you would accept the petition.
Um, so we can do this for 90 days, or we can extend it out?
We can, so, so the, 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 the technical, technically what we're doing is, is, and I'd have to see how we would, how we would do this, is that we would, we either need to hire him as a, in essence, a seasonal worker, which would keep him...
A seasonal worker?
There's no such thing as that.
Under our, under our bylaws, it's temporary.
According to federal laws, there's not.
No.
Temporary, yes.
Well, it's...
Temporary, yes. Seasonal is no longer.
I meant, I meant temporary.
We could hire him, like you say, for a 90-day period and then we're...
Or, or, I was gonna say, we can 1099 him as a consultant. So which would you prefer?
Prefer would be employee.
Employee.
You would prefer to be employee. So it would be in a, in a temporary, it would be in a temporary role?
Yes, if we say 90-day period, and if we feel that we have to go over 90 days and we won't...
Then we, then we would, then we would do it in, in options of that. And so long as you stay under the, the 960 hours, then it's, it's kosher for both you and the town to maintain you in a temporary role.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we can do that.
We can do that.
So, um...
With the consultant, 1099, is the self-employed?
Yes.
Understood, yes.
No, no, I understand too what you said, I wouldn't go along with the, with the 1099. All right, so then we'll make a motion also?
So I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion to, to hire him, I'm sorry.
No, I, you know, usually the chairman does the, makes the motion. I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Keith Arsenal as our interim treasurer and consultant.
A second.
Any more discussion? On the favor, aye. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're all set.
All right.
Pleasure.
Yes, nice meeting you.
Your pleasure, Mr. Keith. And I'm just so you don't have to be, you know, formal.
And so I can lose the coat and tie?
You can lose the coat. Please, I think that's what kept on getting Mr. out of my mouth.
So we have...
And my apologies, I'm making a slip up.
Well, we're gonna talk, we'll talk about that too. Okay, then we also have to, we have to do a query check. You know, we do do that all the time, and then you have to fill out all your paperwork.
Okay.
And Karen?
Yeah, it would be, it would be contingent on an acceptable query and, and did you include any references?
It needs to be included.
References?
Yeah, yeah, and successful, Lonnie, yeah.
Lonnie, yeah, we did get references for Lonnie, we have talked to people. Okay.
Did you have references to me?
From you, I don't believe so. No, I just have the, the...
Well, I have, because resume is in there, I don't know what you have, but like, no.
Yeah, there was, there was no, there was no references. If you could, if you could submit them, that would be great.
I can write them down now?
I had, I had one that already gave you a review that was...
And he was one of the...
Yeah.
Jack gave you a very good review.
Thank you.
So we'll call you references. And then, after we get everything all settled around, we'll...
I'm pushing call lead. On the time scan.
Yeah, we'll call Tom, okay. I know Tom very well, he's been coming down for a long time. And then Joan Walker had helped us out here in Brookfield.
We'll call Joan.
Yeah, Joan too, I'll call Joan for that. And, because I know she helped us out for quite a while, and I think she's backed down in Charlton now.
She's helping out in Charlton too.
And we'll let her retire.
And she did a very good job for us, and she's trained, she trained Carrie. I mean, Carrie is an accountant, but she hasn't done municipal, and so she picks it up very good, she's doing a good job.
One of the other benefits is my, I spent on municipal accounting for 38 years.
Oh, wow.
That's a long time.
Yeah, that was a tough one with no firewall in West Brookfield, other than the dinner table, so.
Now, how, how...
Your wife was he found in West Brookfield?
Yes, she was. Things, unfortunately, no leadership changes, leadership changes. The board of selectmen in Brentfield, ruined her act at Brentfield. She had been accounting at those places, and she retired for a year. They obtained an outside accounting firm. They weren't happy with that particular firm, and they contacted her, and just for a package.
Great.
Yep.
Now who is some...
Always, West Brookfield resident, he had been chairman of the advisory board.
Okay.
That'd be great.
I don't, he's in the phone book.
He is, okay, well, I'll, I'll, that's fine, okay, and Joan, I know, I have Jack's number, too. He's involved with the Knights of Columbus with his presence, this is how I know Jack so well.
Everybody knows Jack.
Oh, everybody knows Jack. Okay, so we'll have to, you know, if you can fill out, you know, like the queries, maybe Holly can get that for you.
We could do it today, or I was tentative of coming back on Thursday.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Are you, do you have time that you could get his package together?
Oh, I do, yeah, awesome.
Okay, Keith, thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
And do we want to talk about hiring Lonnie as the treasurer, or do we want to wait until...
Thank you. Oh, great. Well, obviously, you didn't get on this, on this line, so. We probably need clearance for the pay discussion for Lonnie to figure out what that was.
But, well, do you agree, would you like to hire her?
I would concur with that.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to hire Lonnie Crease, how do you say her name?
Cryaia.
Cryaia as the town treasurer. And she will be taught by our Keith Arsenal to be our interim. And I'd like to make, entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
And any discussion? Well, the only thing is, we'll just have to talk to Clarence next week about the pay.
That pays now.
And then maybe with her, we can hold her off till next week. We'll see if she will accept the position. But we have to talk about the pay with her. And we'll just hold off till next week getting her in. And we had called her, she had all very good references also. We called all supposedly.
Great.
So that's all set. Okay, so that's set there. Okay. All righty, so do we want to?
Did we vote it, or did we just make the motion?
Did you vote? Linda, yep, that's the move Linda seconded.
Okay, we'll vote it.
Did I miss it?
Voter in all, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So do we want to do the appointments now, or do we want to wait?
No, let's do them. We put them off.
Okay, all right. Okay, here, we have, um.
For the advisory board, there's, um, there's extra.
There's more people than we have musicians.
Yeah, if you want to look at the list, maybe you want to share that with the list. There is, there's more people than.
Well, and we'll look at these two together. And she said that we had like four to play with because we have, because Bill's off now.
Right.
And so we have three, so we need at least six people.
Correct.
Six.
Well, three people.
And you have supposed to be, it's like you have eight new ones.
Eight new ones on here, so, okay.
I think that's what it was. Four. So it's a total, what's the, the total of the board is what, nine?
Nine, nine people.
So we actually have five.
Two that are already on that are reappointed, which is Mr. Auburn and, and Steve Gillen. And all the rest of Gillis, and all the rest are new, yeah.
Do you want to appoint Mr. Gillis?
And then we have the other two, two that are reappointed.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Gillis.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And Anthony Austin, I'd like to make a motion to retain him. Who?
Okay, I'll second that.
And how about Ken Cleveland?
Uh, he's got some good experience. He's been on the selectmen as well. He's been on finance before, I believe. Okay, or on advisory before.
Okay, so we'll.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ken Cleveland.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then Leonard Farr. He.
Let's see here.
He's our senior worker.
He's our senior worker for us then.
I know, I had a discussion with him, and he is very willing, as long as there's some training involved. And that's one of the things I was gonna, wanted to speak with you and Clarence about, is that I'd like to do some training for the advisory board.
Well, yeah, they do, they, they usually do have a training session in the fall and it's run by the Department of Revenue.
Well, they had it in May this year. So are they gonna have another one in the fall?
Oh, yeah, they usually do. They usually have one in the fall.
Okay.
So they can probably get, it would be nice if we deduct them, you know, if they're available to go.
Right, but if they're, if they're not, we can maybe do something with them informally.
Yes, okay.
But I'll, I'll make the motion for Leon, Leonard, I'm sorry, Leonard Farr.
I'll, I'll make that motion. I mean, I'll second it. So now we have one, two, three, four. Okay, Maureen Marano was our.
Actually, Curtis Showan, I believe, had the.
I don't know.
He is a, uh, accountant for the corporate accounting. Um, I, I think he would be a great candidate for one of that, unless he wanted to go with Maureen because she has a background as a senior account person, again, corporate side. And she's retired, he's got a full-time job.
I, I think because Karen said she had met her, and she's very personable, and she said she seems very well attuned with.
Okay.
So I'd like to, Maureen, how do you say her last name?
Uh, Mariano.
Mariano. I would like to make a motion to appoint her.
I'll second that.
All right, and we could.
You can have more than nine.
Nine. How many we have now?
Can you can't show?
Uh, no, that's one of the ones that's defined by by law.
It is, that's fine. Okay, so now we have one, two, three, four. Five, we need one more.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah.
We need one more. So would you want to put on, um?
I'd like to, I'd kind of like to see, well, you know, um, I know Tara Brown has been on it previously.
She had gone on, and she did, but she didn't stay.
She didn't because her husband had a significant health event.
Yeah.
That's now reconciled.
So we do.
Well, you don't have Curtis on there.
Who?
Oh, or Curtis.
Oh, you want to put him?
That's true, we could go with Curtis.
Between the two of them. So it's up, what, who, who do you, I mean, I don't, um.
You don't know either one of them?
No, I don't know.
Wow, that's a tough, that's a tough choice, because I, uh.
Now, you've worked with her before.
I have worked with her before. She's got very good Excel skills. She does understand at least some of the basics of municipal finance.
Yeah.
Uh, but I spoke with Curtis, and he's got like some, some mad knowledge about nonprofits. So.
Okay.
So let's, let's go ahead and make a motion for Curtis.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. Okay, so we're all set with that. Okay, now we'll move on to agricultural commission for our three-year term for Barbara, Barbara Haviland and Cindy Thompson. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have alternates. We have Donald Brines, Kent Cleveland, Donald Haviland, and Mark Ledoux. Um, I'll make the motion to appoint them.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. And we need an assistant animal control officer. We have to find somebody for that position, yes.
We don't have.
We don't have anyone.
She's working on that. It's only, it's only the yellow that has to be reappointed, only the high level ones.
Have, have we reached out to the Sturbridge Animal Control Officer to see if they would take our assistant animal control officer position just to reply?
I'm pretty sure we had.
Last time I talked to, um, to Sarah Perdue, I know, I did inform her that Tony Pelikowski wasn't interested in continuing.
Carrie's hoping for something.
And she thought she had someone in mind. I haven't talked to her since. I think we're.
We'll find, find out who it is.
Yeah, and she doesn't have anyone in place. She's still working on it. But I will suggest, you think the Sturbridge Animal Control Officer?
Might be willing. I know it's, it's probably not enough funds to really interest her if it's only as backup.
I know we reached out to a lot of communities and nobody was really interested.
Well, Sarah did, yes. Sarah, I know she had, she did say she had someone else in mind, and she told her Tony couldn't do it, but she didn't.
And if you could actually ask Sarah to reach out to them about potentially, they do have their own, um, animal control kennel.
We have.
See if we can work out a relationship with them in the interim until we figure out what they do about facilities.
We have been working on it ever since then. Really should, the perfect place for, where they originally wanted to put it years ago was at the landfill. And we had, we appropriated monies, and I don't know what happened to that, but border health is not.
Yeah, Mike said border health does not want.
They don't want it.
No, I think it, well, Sarah thinks it would be a good place.
It is a good location.
It is a good location.
And you're one of the neighbors, and you're not, not objecting to it.
I don't object to it. No, I don't object to it at all.
Right. Uh, I, I think, I think we need to revisit that with the border health.
I think we also have to revisit that too.
Yeah, because I know that there, there's like pre-made kennel buildings specifically for that type of facility that meet all the state of Massachusetts regulations that would at least give us a baseline for how much it would cost. And they literally can get dropped in place.
They do.
I mean, it's amazing.
We really, I feel we really need our own facility, because I know when Carrie's husband was helping out, you know, he, um, they would take the dogs home themselves.
Right.
And then if Quabah had some room, Quabah would take them. But then we have to pay all of that.
Right.
All right, so why don't we do that? I think we should visit that. Okay.
Uh-uh.
Did we, did we vote the animal inspector?
No, yeah, animal inspector is William Thompson.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're down to the bylaw committee. Uh.
Jessica did not want to be on that.
She left it in. James Cook, Barbara Wilson, Jay David Holcraft, and Robert Barnes. And we still have to find somebody.
I tell you what, let's, can you send a note out to Tara Brown and see if she's willing to get involved in the bylaw?
Sure. Okay, but you want to appoint Aldi?
So, so that bylaw committee hasn't delivered any reports or minutes for how long.
I don't even know how long they need. I know when I was.
I tell you what, let's, let's hold off on bylaw committee, and let's send out a solicitation for additional people who will want to take an active role in revising the bylaws.
Because I, I know that I was, I was on it for a while, and we used to meet maybe once a month or something.
Right, I mean, even monthly would be fine, but I don't see a lot of activity.
I don't really think that they have. All right.
Okay.
This is CBG Advisory, and I said I didn't want to be on it this year. So we have Goose Clapp, uh, Lucy Thompson, Bethany Roberts, Mary Lou Knight, and Bill Simpson. I don't know, but we need a selectman on there?
I believe you do, because you were representing for the selectman on there. So you don't want to do it? Does anyone else want to?
Yeah, if you need to, I'll do it. Because I feel pretty passionately about pursuing CDVG money for the town.
I'm just too, you know, things though. All righty, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that on.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve all those appointments.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Yes.
And did you read off the names that were on there?
Yeah, I did already. Yeah, I had read them all. If you want me to do them again?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
And I'll just do a new, new select. And then did we do the central mass regional planning?
Okay, we can do that. Okay, we have, um, central mass regional planning is Kevin Urkel.
And Maureen Leepa. No, Maureen, it's just Kevin.
Just Kevin.
No, it's Maureen too, I'm sorry. It's Ma.
Well, the board, the board appoints the main person.
Oh, that's what it is. Okay.
Right, the, the, the select board appoints the main person, and, uh, and the planning board appoints the alternate.
Okay, all right.
So they're gonna point.
So the, both of them?
So you'll have to, she'll, they'll have to put Maureen, corrections the delegate? And, because I have, Kevin has the alternate.
Whereas Kevin's supposed to be the delegate.
Yeah.
The point, the problem is, I don't know if Maureen wants to do it or not.
So do we want to just hold, do we want to just hold off? Then let's hold off on that.
We'll hold off on that one too.
All right.
And you'll be appointing Kevin anyway, so that's not an issue here, so.
Okay, then we have a constable for one year, Arthetater.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for Arthetater for one year constable position.
I'll second, I'm favored. Aye. And then the cultural council, we'll go here. Uh, Jean Lidle.
I'll make the motion for Jean Lidle and Kathleen Landy.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. And then election workers, we have Jane Haye, Carol Lafayette, Annette Lindsay, Arlo Gorden, Catherine Latour as the warden, Carolyn Murray, Karen Simpson, Larry Woodin, Sally Brown, Sandra Pratt, Sandra Renaud, and Geraldine Paza. And this is for a one-year term.
You have that motion?
Well, I have had the.
For all those names?
Yep, motion for all of these names. And, uh, we just.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. And now we're going to go down to the emergency medical squad. And this is all for, um, three years. Okay, we have Peter Martell as the captain, Matthew Graves as a lieutenant.
I thought they, they're indicated as being good through twenty nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, that, that shouldn't be highlighted.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. We have Terry Anderson, David Martell.
They have the three years. They usually are one-year terms, but, um, when I talked to Peter and I, I talked to the chairman too, they said do a three-year term because it's easier for them, so that's what, what.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with.
They said you have.
Yeah, I am too. Okay, so we have Terry Anderson, David Martell, Daniel Driscoll, Ashley Marks, Valentin, how do you, Rosario?
Fanteline.
Fanteline. Richard Phillips, Matthew Rodrick, John Glennon, Ryan Relion. I don't know if that's how you.
Rinaloni.
Rinaloni. Robert Connor, Matthew Graves, Donald LaFleur, Peter Martell, and Mark Lovely.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we have for firefighters, Stephen Buttnick, Donald LaFleur, Philip Chaffey, Linda McFloyd, Tal Contour, Matthew Graves, Matthew Rodrick, Daniel Driscoll, David Merlow, Robert Connor, Daniel Esser, Jeffrey White, Aaron White, Rice, Charles Edgett, Jesse Finnan.
Finnan.
Yeah. Raymond Rinaloni, Ashley Marks, Megan Fodia, Matthew Phillips, Sean Edgett, and Jay Haley.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Uh, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And now for the historical, we have Carol Plum for three years.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And now, this is another, we, we have never met.
But I did talk to, um, and the Metaville, and she said it should still be, and it should still be, and should be active. So we should continue to.
Okay, well, we'll have to then. Okay. I'll stay on as the rep for the board of selectmen, and we need Mike Siri, um, Sally Brown, and Brendan Meteville, and we need a member for this. So we'll have to find a member for him. Uh, make the motion to appoint him.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, homeland security for three years is, I don't know, Keith already said it.
I'll second.
All right, insurance advisory committee, one year. Barbara Clancy for the retirees, Sherri Gillen, the teacher's rep, Linda Lincoln for the town hall retirees, Joanne O'Connell, she's from the school, Sergeant Stephen Parisow for the police, Holly Chilley for the town hall staff, James Boo for water, and Donald Herbert for the highway department. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have local access members. We have Sharon Mahoney and Daniel Kane.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
New members, and you are there too.
What?
Yeah, we need some, yeah, we need some.
Yeah, because it should be a seven, seven-member committee, so we can see if we can get about four people to go on. Okay, master plan committee, we have Dr. Peter Levine.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have disbanded this committee. That was the one we had before. But you need, uh, seven. Now, weren't we gonna get that started up?
Yeah, we're working.
Yeah, we need, we need to try to.
But we don't have, yeah.
Hit the restart button, but I'll, I'll, I'll come up with it. I'll start a draft of a charge and get it to you.
Oh, we, yeah.
We have to have a charge. Yeah, we have a charge. It's just matter of reaching out to people.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a charge?
Okay. Overseas board of dispatch, it can be either Chief Blanchard or Sergeant Parisow.
I think I'd kind of prefer to have Chief Blanchard do that.
Yeah, I think I would also. Okay, make the motion to that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Packing clerk in here in office for, for a year is Michael T. Siri. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Police chief, Michael Blanchard, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sergeant Stephen Parisow, patrolman Sean Marano, Lee Murphy, and Ryan Stanley. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, police reserve officers, Serenity Allen, Ryan Kitty, Greg Pianta, Michael Green, Alex Johnson, and Herbert Dunn. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we still want to?
Now, they're still meeting.
They are still meeting.
They are still meeting.
I have to do that because they have loose ends. They tie enough to, yeah, you need to point them.
All right, all right. We have Bill Simpson, Crummet Eaton, David Home, Pat Washburn, Richard Lafayette, Doug Brown, and Peter Martell. I would like to make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. And now, Quabah Valley Community Development is Mr. Snyder, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Rep commission is Jeffrey Landine, Jake Hill, Kyle Hill, and Eric Blake. I'll make that mo, oh, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Now we come down to the sexual harassment offices. Kathleen Bradley and Lanny Christe.
Cryaia.
Cryaia. I'll have to learn how to say it. Cryaia. I'll make that motion.[1742.11]
Second.
Okay, um, favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we come down to town hall improvement is William Simpson Jr., Alan Jones, John Taft, Carol Plum, and Marylin Knight.
I'll make that motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, wiring inspector is Scott Mansfield, and his alternate is Martin Nagel. I'll make the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, zoning board of appeals, William Knoll, I don't think he's going anymore.
Um, yeah, I believe I talked to him, couldn't get ahold of him, but Mike said to appoint them, so. I had a hang in there.
Let's, I think we should hold off.
Alright. On that until we have confirmation.
I think so too, because he's, he's been off and on on that committee, so I think we should talk to him.
I'll drop, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't want to appoint anybody, I don't think that, yep, that's their risk.
Yeah. Okay, town council, KP, it's KP Law. I'll make the motion?
Second, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, you don't have to do these all at one time, I could even, well, I, I never, you could even take them home.
I may take them home inside.
You don't have to take them home inside. They're doing them now.
That's a plan. Because you have a way to talk to the station.
Okay, okay, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have, the next thing here on the agenda is, uh, wage authorization for the fire department.
I tried to get ahold of, um, of Peter twice yesterday, because I wanted to make sure that he, he, I know he was working with Kerry, couldn't get ahold of him, I know he was busy yesterday, but, I mean, that's everything that he wrote.
Because he was here.
Well, he, he warned us basically that if we go with the intended wage, that currently as budgeted, there's at least a risk, and one of the challenges is if you don't actually know how many calls they're gonna have to respond to. So I think he tried to calculate it out at...
It was a...
About twelve thousand dollar difference, yeah.
Chief salary does not factor in the wage, could give a remaining, it's probably one point.
And he's basically saying that if the wages, uh, it would come out to be about, about nine months of coverage?
Yeah. Okay, so, do we want to do all of this now, or are we on the?
Um...
Should we?
Well...
Some of them are four, okay.
I think he has a list of them all, so you don't have to really go through them all, but once up the assignment.
Right.
Okay, see.
Somebody's got as a firefighter, as captains and lieutenants.
Yeah, the firefighters are twelve, for one-year experience, one to three is twelve fifty an hour. Three to five years is thirteen, firefighter is five to ten is thirteen fifty an hour, firefighters over ten is fourteen. Uh, captain should get fourteen twenty, and the lieutenant should get fourteen twenty-five, and for calculation purposes, fourteen an hour is used. So I'll make a recommendation that will sign, that we will sign a wage authorization for the fire department.
Okay, I'll second that.
You want to do them now, or?
Sure, might as well work through them.
You want to start selling now?
Yep, if you give me half the stack, I'll sign, that way they can get processed and, and we have them in time for the next paper. Day's the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
I keep checking to see if, I hear from Clarence, let me see if he's...
I hope he's alright.
Oh, I'm sure he's fine. Okay, he said, he said please move forward, okay, so he's not gonna be able to make it, so he's... I think he did okay.
Unfortunately, I could take a long lunch today.
Okay, where's the one for July?
Those are the ones that I've signed. I think some of them, when you get to the bottom of them, you'll have your signature.
Okay, so we can move on, I'll just stay.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, the side of the insurance document, if you want to explain to Beth about, um...
Okay, uh, we had, we had budgeted at town meeting on the insurance here, this is our renewal for the property and, um, liability, and all of these. We had budgeted one forty-one, one hundred dollars, and it came up to one forty-one six hundred.
And that was based on, on Mr. Joseph's recommendations, I sent you an email.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Okay, so there's a little more, but, um...
So we can appropriate the money probably as, as a special town meeting and, um...
In the fall?
In the fall for that.
And bills?
So like authorization to, to sign it?
I'll make that motion to authorize the chair to sign?
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And we're not gonna incur any fees because of the short pay?
No, what it is, is, um, quite honestly, um, he, yeah, he, he gets coaching with the payment, not personally, we'll be checking the fees and the bulk of it is actually his commission, I believe that he's willing to wait for, so, let me discuss that.
Oh, now I gotta print, print the names too?
There's one that doesn't have a line, but there is a tab, I questioned him about that, you still have to sign it. It is five places to sign.
That's all, yeah, okay, now we move on. And this one, yeah.
Alrighty.
And this is municipal transfer. Okay.
That's the reserve.
That's from the reserve fund. Okay, we'll have to get, this is for, um, fourteen thousand from the town hall improvement account for the advisory reserve fund.
Let's see.
Have they used, didn't they, they used, um, up that much if they needed a transfer?
Uh, no, if you recall, the, the, we're paying for the furnace largely out of, uh, the reserve fund, funds from this year.
Okay, okay. Oh, I, I would like to make a motion to transfer, um, fourteen thousand from town, town hall footage to the advisory reserve fund.
Um, can I amend that? Well, I'll second it, and then we want to amend that to be from the advisory reserve fund to the town hall improvement account.
Oh, it's from?
Yes.
Oh, so we gotta just reverse it, okay.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll amend it that it comes from the advisory reserve fund to the town hall improvement fund.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, this is one for, um...
It's, remember when we spoke before, Beth forgot on Good Friday, and you did say it would be nice to, so I did send you an email and reached out, because July fourth is another one of those holidays, um, a part of the STAM, you know, part of the MMA, it's a whole conversation that goes on between administrative assistants and, and the email that I sent you, again, the consensus is that most places are closing on Monday as well as Tuesday, but it's an unpaid day off on Monday. But I did offer it out to the other.
They can like either take personal day, or they can take a vacation day.
They want, and they can just take it up.
And it has been offered to all the employees.
Well, I sent that email, which is, you know, I want to include everybody, I mean, they, you can read it.
And it go, and it went to all the department heads?
Went to the department heads, correct. I didn't get any feedback, I asked for feedback, I didn't get any.
Was highway on there? I think it was highway.
Did I?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, same.
Yeah, so if you could forward it, if you could forward it to highway as well.
Okay, um, I don't see any problem with that.
No, I would, I would, I would, uh, support doing it as an unpaid, you know, basically town closure, it's, it's unpaid if people choose to take it unpaid, if they want to apply time to it, they're free to do that.
I'm surprised, because I, I have a department head heading that usually includes all, so let me just double check.
You might want to double check your department head file, it might be missing highway.
What was the date on that email, Linda, the date on that email?
The date on this email? Yeah, alright, the day on the, June fifteenth. I will, I'll make the motion that we close on a Monday, July fourth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now.
No, it's Cindy, Cindy Thompson, yeah.
Oh, is it, okay.
Yeah, so, I did remember, yeah, they're all in that, because I knew they were all, we used the same heading, so, yeah, excuse me that, so. Haven't heard anything, so I guess it's at their own discretion whether they want to close or not.
This is something Karen had, Karen discussed with me and Clarence, and Clarence, and we kinda went along with it, spoke closing the town hall on Fridays, and then they would, you know, she would work from home.
Well, based on, part of it's based on the fact that we have, I have a problem with the minutes, I'm way behind on the minutes. And I remembered that, um, years ago, that Donna Nealon and also Jennifer did their minutes every Friday, and I know you came in and you said you were concerned about the minutes. I discussed it with Linda, but then Clarence happened to come in, and I threw it out to him, and he said, oh, absolutely, he said, and he's not here.
Most of the towns, most of the towns are not open on Fridays.
And she can read that, yeah.
Right.
Most of them are.
And I, I don't have any real, I, I have concerns, security concerns, of the fact that it's open, you're back in here. You know, you don't even know who's wandering around in the town hall.
Well, I have to leave this open and listen, yeah.
That's true, and, and then people come in too, and they expect Karen to take payments, and she can't, and answer these questions, and they get very frustrated, they leave.
Better have a locked door than that, quite frankly.
And honestly, I mean, more than work at home, probably I'll stay as late as Brenda does sometimes, maybe come a little early in the morning, and then maybe work a half a day at home, or if you read the letter, it's, I, it can be a combination of anything, because I don't want to have to say I'm gonna work at home all day if I put an extra hours here and can say after a certain time, just devote it to minutes once the town hall's closed. Town hall technically closes at three or four.
Yeah, Donna Nealon, this is one from her, Donna had made the, um, an analysis on what we would be saving, and that was back, um, those years.
Alright, so that would only be, well, the oil's a little cheaper now, but the electric's more expensive, so.
And now we have, that, that one hallway has air conditioning too.
Yep.
Which would be, which would be awesome.
So, um, we'd like to start this, say, um, as of July first?
That's what Clarence said, no, Clarence said start at FY eighteen, that's where that came from, that was his suggestion.
Yeah, July first, FY eighteen, okay, um, I'd like to, I'll make the motion that we close the town hall as of, uh, July first of, uh, the new fiscal year.
On Fridays.
On Fridays.
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, so what we have here for correspondence, oh, we, yeah. Okay, this is the Brookfield service schedule from CM, CM three?
Elderbus.
Elderbus, okay, and the, the fees from Monday through, uh, Friday is a dollar fifty, and they bring in medical from nine to three, work nine to three, and central business nine AM to three PM. And then out of, out of town medical is done on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. And then they go to Worcester and Auburn at ten AM to twelve PM, and then twelve PM to two PM. Other medical locations between nine thirty AM and two thirty PM. Medical trips to the next town are available Monday through Friday during the same timeframe. Out of town grocery shopping on Tuesdays at the fair of a dollar fifty, and that's up to Hannaford's in North Brookfield, uh, and they drop them off at ten thirty, and they pick them up at twelve. And the number down there is one eight hundred three two one zero two four three. So I think that's probably it, do we have, uh, any, do we have anything else that you would like to bring up?
No, I don't have anything for today.
No, I don't have anything, and then we're meeting again on, uh...
The eleventh.
Next Tuesday.
The meeting, um, Monday, I think it's Wednesday, until when we meet again.
Do we have all, do we have all of our meetings circled in?
Yes, you do, you have them through, through July, I think it is.
Now, the next meeting is gonna be July eleventh, Tuesday, yeah. Did you say Wednesday?
I thought, I think, I thought I said Wednesday.
Well, we did have one Wednesday, but remember we canceled it?
That's right.
Okay, so we're gonna meet July eleventh?
And that's when you're gonna open the bids to the, um, Dunbrook Bridge too, and?
I'd like to actually put on the agenda for that, let's start on our special town meeting warrant, even though we don't know what our funding is gonna be, let's go ahead and open the warrant and start getting the items moved over that we put off from the town.
On seven eleven? On seven eleven, how many, uh, what else do we have on the agenda?
We have, um, uh, seven PM bid opening to Dunbrook Bridge, seven thirty is a class two license, that's for Brookfield Eye, and wants to open that, open that up again. CIPC, discussion of capital expenditures for FY eighteen, Kermit asked me to put that on, and then I'll also put in...
Maybe we can do, do that together, say maybe for us on the agenda with the, um, getting ready for the town meeting article.
If you want to discuss it, I want to open the special town.
Let's, let's open it and start drafting it now, so that we're not doing the last-minute itis that we seem to chronically do for the town meetings.
Because we have seven PM as the, the, is a bid opening at seven thirty is the hearing, then after that we'll do it.
So we can, we, okay.
So it'll have to be after seven, probably eight o'clock-ish. And I don't know, because when I talked to, um, Al, um, the emitters have to be notified, by the way, and it's, uh, the, the business's responsibility to do that.
Yeah, I told you that, yeah, anybody within the three hundred feet range.
And there are a lot.
Oh, there are a lot.
So we might have a crowd here, so I don't know. I mean, it might be a while, the hearing.
I'm wondering if we should, like...
I mean, this, that's been it forever, I don't anticipate any problems, because it's run as a car dealership for a long time. What happened is, they did let it lapse this year, so they have to apply all over again. It, it's different people leasing it, but the original owner's still on the property.
It would be good to have the go-in concern instead of vacant, I'm not expecting a lot of pushback, but.
No, I don't think so, I think the...
Okay, then, well, we have it on the agenda, so I'll open the special town anymore.
So we want to open that at six thirty? Or what do we have for six?
Well, I have, I, what I did is I put the bid opening at seven, because that's what Cindy, that's what Cindy had planned, so I figured what we could do is...
So can we open the meeting at six thirty, and we can maybe burn through like the capital?
Yeah, that's what I figured, you could usually take them out of order.
Yeah, okay, alright, we'll go through, take them, yeah. Okay, so that's what's on the agenda, okay. Alright, okay, that sounds good. Okay, I'd like to make, if, anything else? No? Okay, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn at, um, twelve twenty-nine? Okay, like to make the motion to return at, um, twelve twenty-nine?
I'll second.
I think it's really twelve thirty-two.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot, okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.